We will have our city council study session for May the 20th. Again, I will note for the record that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on several community services, emergency funding programs. Ruth, welcome. You and your department have been busy. Michelle?
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ruth Giesi, Community Services Director. With me is Michelle Albanese and Mary Brandon of our office. Today, we are going to be reviewing four emergency funding programs, all with new federal funding. You just heard about the voucher program. We wanted to include this in our discussion because all four programs really support one another and complement each other, and that's why you're hearing about the vouchers one more time, because they really, all of these programs, support one another. The first is the, so you will be hearing, the Emergency Homeless Vouchers is one program. The Housing Solutions Program, which is the landlord program that we were just referring to, that is funded with existing housing community voucher CB funds. The Emergency Rental and Utility Assistance Program, Round Two, and the Home Funds, both of these are part of the American Rescue Plan that just came through. All of these programs assist the same population with providing housing and stability services. Homeless, at-risk homeless, or recently homeless individuals, and then those fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. So this is a very specific population, these areas, that all of this funding are being provided to assist with. We will be asking city council direction for the ERAP Round Two funding and the Home funding. I will have both Mary and Michelle provide you with details of these programs.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As we previously reviewed the Emergency Homeless Housing Vouchers with you at the Housing Governing Board meeting, we have been awarded the 108 vouchers. We're going to ask for 108-plus vouchers. We will be partnering with our Continuum of Care and other victim services agencies that we can get our referrals from. It is the targeted population that Ruth had reviewed with you as well. These vouchers are supporting and working with the other programs that we're going to review with you today. As we've spoke many, many times about additional vouchers and additional programs and the high-market rents and the lack of landlords willing to work with our programs, we need more landlords. And we have decided that we are going to take $300,000 of our admin fee that we receive for our Section 8 program for COVID and make this new program for our landlords. We're calling it the Housing Solutions Program for, to increase landlord participation. With this program, we will have a full-time staff dedicated to this program. We need someone to come in and think outside of the box of how we've done things for our landlord outreach. What are some innovative ways that we can reach out to our community, to the landlords, to assist with these vouchers that are so important? They'll contact them. Our normal way has been site visits and phone and email. What are other ways that we can reach out to them? We're going to educate them about our housing programs, what it is to be a landlord, what's the benefits of working with our program. With this new program, we're going to have some different incentives. We have our Salt River Pima Grant that we have, that we assist with damages up to $2,000 to assist landlords. We have vacancy payments that if they turn that unit and lease it for our voucher participants, will pay up to seven days. So on top of that, we're going to add some additional monetary incentives. For every new, we call it Housing Assistance Payment Contract, we call it the HAP, the lease, we will pay $500 for all current landlords. New landlords that haven't worked with our program for six months or longer will do $1,000 for every new HAP that they have. Also with this, we're going to have to seek additional funding for this program. We're not sure how far this $300,000 will go. I'm hoping it'll get us through the end of the year or more, but we want this program to be strong for two full years. We'll be reviewing the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that goes along with that as well. As we talked about our vouchers, the Emergency Rental Utility Assistance Program is just that emergency help right now. It's to help where they're not to be evicted now. But with these vouchers and with these additional landlords, that we can assist the long term. And so with the Emergency Rental Assistance Program Two, the city has been awarded $12,470,000 to continue this program, very similar to the Phase One.
It's 12 million.
Oh, 12,000. It's not going to go very far. That's one rent. I'm sorry. And Michelle was telling me that. 12 million, 12.4 million. How about that? Forget all those other numbers. I'm sorry. And so the guidance on this that we have, and again, this is another program that we're learning every day, frequently asked questions have just come out again on it. We continue to get the guidance. But it's very similar to, we call it ERAP One, but 75% is for the rent and utilities, which is about 9.3 million. Administrative cost has gone up. It's usually 10%. They gave us 15% to administer this because they want us to do it a little different. 10% is for housing stability. How we see this with what we've learned, what we've read, is this housing stability would be that we would reach out to those that have received assistance in our community. Maybe we partner with a community partner to have resume and interview skills taught to them. Maybe it's budgeting, maybe it's whatever. So whatever it is that is their roadblock to make them, their housing more stable, this is the money that is to be used for those activities. Housing counseling services for individuals and disabilities or seniors to support their ability to access and maintain housing. We'll have some conversations with our partners to plan this. We have lots of planning to do on this. And since I'm going to spend ERAP One by the end of July, we have planning to do really quick here. So I think that's it for the ERAP. If you have any questions?
Yes.
We have several. Vice Mayor and then Mr. Luna.
I have just a simple question. I see September or SEP 2025, is that, is that a period of time?
Yes, these fundings are through 2025.
Okay. All right. We have quite a few years.
We have, we have time to spend this money.
She'll spend it.
Yeah.
It'll be spent before, well before then.
That's our deadline that they have given us.
Because our ERAP One, it was, how much? It was a little less than 10, wasn't it?
15.7 million.
15, and you spent that in one year?
She'll be spending, well, no, she spent it in months.
Yeah, we start in February 1.
And she'll have it done by the end of July?
We'll be real close.
Oh, so 12?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So 2025.
Just quickly, also, I just, I don't know if we mentioned in that box there, it's rent, utilities, and you want to talk about the internet real quick?
Oh, yes.
Because I know that's been a concern for council.
Yes. So we currently, we're assisting with rent and utilities, and we're going to include the internet on ERAP Two because that is an eligible expense that we can help. We're still planning this, but what our preliminary plan is that we would do a lump sum, similar to the broadband federal funding that they're doing. We would do $50 lump sum per month to assist families. So if they apply for rent and utilities and we ask if they need internet assistance as well, and they give us a bill, we will pay $50 per month. When you have the bundling and that kind of, it gets a little sticky, so we decided we would just try with the lump sum towards that, because that's kind of the average.
Thank you, Mary. You know, Vice Mayor Duff and I had the opportunity to go to your ERAP One, a system over here down on Center Street. Now with ERAP Two, will you continue with the same staffing model? Do you have capacity to implement the assistance program with ERAP Two?
Yes, we will. Thank you, Councilmember Luna. We will, most likely, again, we're planning this out, stay with the same model, and we have some great veteran team members that have been with us for several months that are so strong. We have lost a few because the Mesa Art Center opened up, so we lost a few to them. And the utilities, the customer service, they're going back to work as well, but we will beef it up.
Well, we had the opportunity to meet many of them, and it looked like they enjoyed working, working with you, and you've been a great leader on that, both you, Ruth and Michelle. Thank you so much. The other thing I was going to ask you, are you going to be working, I know new leave, I was on the board for many years. They have, they provide the wraparound services in terms of helping individuals with resume building, interview skills. So are you planning to work with various agencies around the community?
Yes, yes. Councilmember Luna, we are going to outreach to our partners and kind of have a quick presentation with them to let them know what our plan is, what it is that we're expecting, and then possibly have a process where they can apply, that they would like to have this. And we're going to have them do this part because they're, they're the experts in this, not us.
The other thing I was got, when you talked about the, the internet and trying to provide some services there, funding for that, are you planning to work with Cox Communication? I know they offer a 995 a month, and I, and I just think I received an email from one of their, their individuals in charge of government affairs about providing additional services. Are you reaching out to them to see if there's a possibility of working with them?
Yes, we have. We have spoke with Cox and CenturyLink on this to get their, their feel and how their programs work, if we pay it directly to them, are we going to pay it to the applicants? So that's, we're in the works of that one.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
And to follow up with that, Mayor, Councilmember Luna, not only are we going to be able to provide some support, but we're also letting everybody know about the fact that they can apply directly for assistance for $50 a month moving forward. So we are trying to reach out and let, let folks know about that as well.
Mr. Heredia.
Sorry, were you adding a point or?
No, no, please move ahead.
Eligibility for the program, does it maintain the same for residents?
Yes. It's the same, basically, it's the same whether it's, the preference is 50% AMI or out of a job for the last 90 days or more, or we still accept applicants at 80% AMI, and that has not changed.
And how do you handle folks that receive assistance from the, the first round, and they continue to have hardship and apply for the second round?
Oh, Councilmember Heredia, that's a great question. I'm sure it's here on my notes somewhere. I should have mentioned that. This program, ERAP Two, is up to 18 months of all rental assistance programs.
Okay.
So with ERAP One, we're looking at a program that we did in the fall to make sure that we're not duplicating assistance, and it'll be the same way with this one, up to 18 months per household.
So was ERAP One 18 months or was it?
15.
15 months, okay.
So it's a combination, a total of 18 months each household can have.
Okay, perfect.
Ms. Spilsbury.
Thank you. I watched a, joined a webinar last week on maximizing the stimulus money, just for the homeless and most vulnerable communities. And so they talked a lot about, I don't know if you guys were on that, but they talked a lot about prioritizing the ones with the most need. So what are we doing? Are we doing anything different this time to try to make sure we're catching the ones that are really in the most need? And there's so much need out there.
There's, there's two pieces with that, Councilmember Spilsbury. When they apply, the online application, they mark one of those categories that Ruth had mentioned, and those applications are processed first. And we're finding 86% of our applications that we assist fall in that Priority One. So I feel like we're doing that. Second thing is, that is where our outreach comes out, that we need to make sure that we outreach to the populations in our community, and we have done really well with that, but I am always looking for ideas to even be better.
Counsel, additional questions on this agenda item? This is agendized to provide direction. I think it'd be fair to say that I'm sensing consensus in support of, of the $300,000 in landlord outreach and other particulars that you've described in this ERAP Two program, so. Mary, will this actually come to a council agenda, or is this just direction you need just from here?
It, it goes under the proclamation that the mayor signed that will go under the city's care spending programs that you've accepted, so we won't need to come back for council for this one.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for, for your work. Next item, and it might be the same cast of characters, I'm not sure.
Yes, but we did want to go ahead and seek direction now on this item, and then we're going to move on to our next item.
Yes. So in terms of providing direction, I don't think we need a motion, so I think that...
I'm just, I don't see anybody who's, so we have direction.
Okay, great.
I guess that's my point. I'm sensing consensus.
Right, thank you.
So the next item is hear a presentation and discuss general review of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Mayor, we saw more of this presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was, that got you to slide, I'm not sure what slide.
Yes, we have one more slide, and then we're going to seek council direction on our home funding.
We'll withhold our direction then until we see the next slide. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. The city was notified just recently, the end of April, that we will be receiving an additional $5.6 million in home funds through the American Rescue Act. This is in addition to our regular home funds that we get annually. We are currently awaiting guidance, and there hasn't been a lot that has been published yet, but what we do know is the types of eligible activities and the target population, which is the same population that we've been speaking about with the homeless or recently homeless, those fleeing a domestic violence or other type of violent situation. All of these funds must be spent by 2030, so we have lots of time to work on this. The home program is a little bit more difficult to administer, so I'm really happy to see that we have a longer timeframe to spend the funds. So as far as the eligible categories, there are three specific categories, and all of these activities have the goal of really providing long-term sustainability to significantly impact the community. So it's not just kind of a Band-Aid or providing, you know, financial assistance, it's a long-term solution. The first eligible activity is acquisition and rehabilitation of either existing housing or land to develop new housing, and that's for the purpose to provide permanent affordable housing for renters. The second activity is acquisition and rehab of existing facilities or acquisition of land to build a new facility, and this is for the purpose of non-congregate housing, which is housing that provides more of a private space for each individual rather than like an open, open shelter. And the last activity is tenant-based rental assistance, the TIBRA program, and this would be providing security deposits and monthly rental assistance for up to 24 months. If we decided to do this type of program, it would really complement the existing City of Mesa TIBRA program that we have going now. All of these programs, as well as the ones that Mary and Ruth talked about, really complement each other, and we'll really be working together for referrals and kind of that next step housing with all of these funds.
Before we transition...
Excuse me? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
So on the rental housing, acquisition, rehab of existing units, if I were a landlord, what would encourage me to participate in this program if I had some, a unit or apartment that needed some rehab? Is there a cap on that money? Are you going to loan money to the landlord to rehab those units to participate in this program?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman. Those are some of the details that we don't know yet, but I can talk on behalf of the regular home program that we have. So we would provide assistance to the landlord to rehab the property, and then they in turn would need to rent the housing to low-mod income persons, 50% or lower, for the home program, and they would have an affordability period. So depending on how much funding we provided, they would either have to keep that property affordable for 10, 15, or 20 years. And then they would be guaranteed rent pretty much every month by the tenants that would be renting there.
So as a landlord, would I be accountable for those monies, taxable or anything as part of my rehab? Like if I owned apartments and I needed that money to rehab, and would that, I guess, be in my P and L for, for the units?
Thank you.
So I don't know if it's taxable or not.
Councilmember Freeman, I am not exactly sure, but I don't believe that it is taxable. What they would get taxed on is the regular rental tax. So if they, you know, were receiving $600 a month from a tenant, they would have the tax on that.
Okay. And then you talked about development of new units. So is that like brand-new buildings? And who's going to, who's going to build those?
Okay, good questions. Councilmember Freeman, so you can provide funding to nonprofit agencies to acquire land or acquire land with an existing building that can be torn down and demoed, and then they would actually create the new housing. And the same restrictions that I had just mentioned about the affordability time, that would even be longer, minimum is 20 years, and we could make it even longer to like 30 or 40 years, depending on the investment.
Have we had some inquiries from our nonprofits to do just that?
We have not recently. This just came out, so I'm not sure if any of the nonprofits, you know, really know about the program yet. But we do, on an annual basis, we have some nonprofit agencies that apply for our regular home funds, and then they'll maximize those dollars with low-income housing tax credits, money from Federal Home Loan Bank.
So Mayor, Council...
Mr. Brady was there.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, I think what we intend to do is we're going to sit down, and we've already presented councils, the mayor referred to earlier, kind of our continuum plan for helping people who are homeless to get off the streets. What we hope to do is take all these pieces and kind of, as the mayor was talking about, fill in those different steps. So instead of just handing it over to a nonprofit and letting them go find clients, we want this, I think the first intention is to try to figure out a way to make this a part of the continuum of people that we're helping identify that are on the streets, get off the streets, and then have this progressive continuum to get them into, into the final step of the voucher and, and getting them to a home. So, but we need some pieces in between. I think the intent is to work with nonprofits, but the idea will be, how can you help us fill those gaps with funds like this? And then their commitment to addressing the clients that we've identified early on that are coming, that are homeless, and then moving them through these different phases of permanent supportive housing and then housing. So this is not intended to be kind of just open up to a nonprofit and then let them fill it up, because we've had some concerns about whether or not the clients that they're bringing in are really helping us address homeless population in Mesa. So this may be more, maybe, this is, the city manager is speaking right now from, before we kind of put it on the street, and maybe also to make sure I have concurrents with council, is that that's the, that's the priority that we establish with council. That's in our mind, that's what we heard from council is, how can we address our problems internally? But yes, we're going to need a lot of partners. We're not a developer, we're not a whatever, but when you develop these properties, and some of our nonprofits have recognized this now, you are obligated to hold that property by the federal government for these purposes for 20 years. And so sometimes 15 years later, 10 years later, they're like, well, wait a minute, we want to do something else, and that doesn't work. So that's the commitment, so.
Chris, this isn't new, right? Because we've done this with our CGPG funding before. I know with many of the nonprofits locally, that they've had to retain their properties for a number of years. So we're doing some, this is in addition, we're doing something very similar to that.
Anyways, different is I think we want this to be part of a mapped-out plan of how this helps us with our population.
Okay.
And I think I just wanted to finish up, you know, when we talk about these, we need to, if you're talking about a mapped-out plan, we need to have a structure for that and where it's going to impact our community at. Because, you know, concentration of services in certain areas is a concern in my district, and the rehab of, of facilities or buildings and apartments, and if we're going to create something new, you know, I have, you know, I have constituents that would be outspoken on that, as we know. So I, I just wanted to ask some other questions on that regarding if I were a landlord and wanted to participate in this program and the time constraints, you know, you're talking 15 or 20 years, and I mean, my gosh, I don't know if I want to participate in a program that lasts that long, and I'm committed to these units for that long, but maybe that's something that some landlords are okay with, but Natalie, did you want to say something? I know you're there for a purpose.
I really do.
Please do.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Freeman. Yeah, what, what Mr. Brady said is exactly correct, and what's been happening with all of these, these pots of dollars, you have been seeing them and hearing about them in pieces, as has the city and the staff. And we're doing a little bit of chasing our tail on this because we have to wait for the guidance and try to figure it all out, and figure out what the dollars can be used for, and figure out which populations and sub-populations that they're, they're eligible for, and how we need to get them out on the streets and, you know, and go through procurement. So there's all of these pieces that are happening all at once, and they're sort of layered on top of each other. And so what our goal is, and what Mr. Brady was talking about, is yes, we want to create an infrastructure, and we want that to be a really strong infrastructure that helps anyone coming into the system, wherever they are in their rehab, you know, journey, that there's a place for them to go and get the, the assistance that they need. And we're trying to take these dollars and be as strategic as we can be for all of those different pieces. So once we have the whole picture created and done, we will definitely provide that to the council because it is going to be a, a good picture. But, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do, and for these particular dollars that we're talking about right now, for the home dollars, what we're really asking council for is, this is the high-level direction right now, based on what we know. What we have to do now is take that out for a competitive bid, and we will say, these are the things that we're looking for because we think that's how it's going to strengthen our infrastructure, and we're going to get proposals from people. And so if they're interested, that's where we would go into more detail, and then finally bring that back to council so that you understand where we're headed, and you could ask more detailed questions at that point, because it would be, it would, we would have more definition.
Well, Mayor and Council, $5.6 million is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money.
So you'll see us come back, talk about, the challenge we're having is, it's, it's the abundance of blessings that keep coming to us, right? Which kind of are over, and they're coming at us sometimes not knowing that they're coming. And so what we are trying to do is pause a little bit, and you'll hear, and in the next presentation, you're going to hear, the other American Rescue Funds, we've got to figure out, well, maybe there's a way to leverage all of them together, right? You know, combine them together, because if we just look at them in their own little pots, I mean, there's money, but it's not, you know, can you really do something impactful by itself? It's limited, but then if you say, well, wait a minute, why do we combine this fund, these funds, and these funds, and these funds? Now we're, now we're like, okay, maybe we can do something significant. So part of this is just understanding the categories that it's available, and you're going to hear again in the next presentation, the same concept. The money's coming out as faster than the guidelines. And then we, what we want to do as staff is to help council kind of look at, elevate the big picture of how we're going to accomplish this. And yes, there is going to be new supportive low-income housing in Mesa, Arizona. Where? I don't know. But there will be new properties, additional properties brought into the city. Otherwise, we need to turn the money back around and send it back to DC. But the need is there. We're also talking regionally and see if there's a way to have a region... We're also talking regionally and see if there's a way to have a regional discussion, especially with the county and some of the other large cities, and try to work to combine, even leverage resources together and coordinate assistance that way. And we get it, concentration, we, we understand that. But right now, our most active area of support for homeless is way on the east side, on the north side. So I think if we can use those patterns and try to mitigate against concentration, we get that. But at the same time, we have to make it convenient and accessible for the services. So I think there's a way we can try to accomplish all those things.
Ms. Pillsbury.
I just want to clear this up for me. Are these three things on the screen, are these three options? Or these are all three programs we're wanting to do, all three of them?
Thank you, Councilmember Pillsbury. These are just options. These are eligible activities. So we could do all these activities, we could do one activity. And that's what we'd like to kind of hear from council eventually when we come back with more details. But these are specifically the activities that we can do.
And are you guys saying what you want or what you prefer, the direction you would want to go?
Councilmembers Pillsbury, we haven't specifically come to an agreement on, on what kind of activities are the best. As Natalie was, was saying, we really want to work together with some of the existing programs. So I think that all three of these types of activities are very viable options. And I know there's a need in the community for each one of these. So we would come back to you with kind of those recommendations based on the applications that we receive and present those to you.
Mr. Freeman.
Just last comment, I'll, I'll be interested in how this matures. And so see how it develops.
Sure. Well, and I think what I'm asking for, council, is to make sure we're, we're still have the support to execute or start to implement the program we brought to you before on the housing continuum, or the homeless continuum, try to help that continuum fill in those pieces. Because that's, I think we're gonna go back to that and then figure out how all these pieces fit into that continuum, bringing people from off the streets all the way to the end of the day, where they're in a independent living, you know, they're living on their own in a home. But there's a lot of steps in between. And we've got to figure out, what we want to do is try to figure out how to bridge all these, put all these pieces together, create the bridge that, that connects all those pieces.
And Mayor and Council, today we were really just wanting to provide an overview of what these dollars can do. And now that we're going to be getting them, we want to start working on, with the city manager's office, on seeking, you know, soliciting applications, seeing what we've, what we are able to get. And then later on, after we've figured all that out, we would come back to you and you could review the recommendations as well at that time.
Sorry about that. Anyway, I know that it's hard to identify specifically right now. You, you gotta collect data, figure out what's the appropriate funding and what areas of funding you need, you need to allocate these funds for. So, so basically what you're looking for is overall direction. These are the areas that we're going to possibly concentrate on. Once we identify what's the most need, then that's where we're going to spend the funding on. And so having, being on the CCD board for eight years now, we need to give you this leeway so that you can identify exactly where the funding needs to go to. So I would be in support of this.
Thank you. I, I echo what my colleagues have said. The thing that I like about this is that we, we're not, this is not new to us. We have been doing light tech projects. We've been doing all of these things that, you know, for the entire time, I think that any of us in this room have been working on this. And we've come up with a plan a year or two ago. And I think when we made that plan, we kind of said, you know, we hope some money magically falls from the sky that will allow us to do some of these things. And then here you go. So I, my hope is that we just, let's implement the plan now. We, we don't just scramble and, and take the money that's thrown at us and figure out how fast we can spend it in some, you know, erratic fashion. This allows us to implement our thought through plan. I think we do need more light tech housing. And that's been part of our plan. And that's in my, I know that home dollars can be used in a variety of ways, but that's how I'm most familiar with using them in the past, is we've partnered with developers to create those projects, good projects that we liked that had wraparound services that we knew were going to be permanent and, and, and have a big impact. So this is, in, in the midst of this horrible experience of COVID, there's some, some golden-
Silver linings.
Yeah, silver linings. And, and so I, I'm just anxious for us, as I know you are, to be as responsible as possible to get the most legacy, long-term impact out of these dollars. And, and a few years from now, we don't just say, man, that money evaporated and we're kind of still back where we started.
Mayor, council members, just to bring to light, we have until 2030 to expend these funds. So we're by no means gonna rush into anything. And it'll really be a thoughtful process. And working with all the other monies that we have and really trying to, as, as City Manager Brady said, formulate the best way we can use those fundings and leverage, leverage all the funding together.
Okay. So we, we're still on the very first agenda item for this meeting and-
Yeah. Can we just, Mayor, why don't we just show you the last slide? I think this slide, why don't you just go to that slide?
There's always one more slide.
Just to show you, I think, I think to your point, Mayor, about money coming in abundance, this is, I think, let's just go through this slide very quickly, just as a summary to show the council what, what resources have been coming to the city for the last year and a half.
Yes. And this is, we just wanted to provide you a snapshot of all the funding that only Community Services has received. But just to give you a highlight, the total emergency funding for all programs is about $54 million that we're working on or is about to come in and, and begin working on. That combined with our normal $24.5 million allocation, that's a total of just over $78 million. And we will plan at some point to do a report to provide council and anyone, kind of a story of what the impact has been with all this emergency funding. And this does conclude our presentation. And if we have any additional questions.
Thank you. Have we expressed the, the direction that is needed? I think-
Yes, I think we have, Mayor, we're good.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We'll look forward, I think, it sounds like we're kind of at the beginning of this. So we're looking forward to, to working through this with you and helping you spend all that money on, in a good way.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss general overview of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Welcome, Mr. Kennington.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Mike Kennington, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Happy to be here this morning. And as we talked about earlier, the American Rescue Plan Act, and I'll refer to it as ARPA, was signed into law on March 10th of this year. The, the program I want to focus on in my presentation is the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. This is the $350 billion bucket for state and local governments. Now, when that was established, it required Treasury 60 days, up to 60 days to get those funds, to begin dispersing those funds to the state and local governments. And sure enough, 60 days later, on May 10th, last Monday, we received a preview of the interim final ruling, which I'll refer to as IFR. Now, this interim final ruling also provides a 60-day notice, or 60-day comment period. So they officially put it in the Federal Register this Monday, May 17th. So we have until July 17th, government agencies to provide comments or provide clarifying questions to the Treasury. And that's why they call it interim final ruling. But most of it will be final, when it becomes final. So on that same date, on the 10th of May last Monday, they allowed city governments and state governments to certify or request those funds. That same day, Mesa was made aware that we would receive $105.5 million in allocated money from those, from that bucket. And I'm happy to say, let's see, let me go back. I'm happy to say this week, we received $52.8 million of our first 50% of the, the funding that we were allocated. Now, the remaining 50% will be received 12 months later. So we're expecting that to be received in May of 2022. Let me step back a moment, this is slide number two. Similar to the CARES Relief Fund of last year, the CRF, these funds are meant to really address the impact of COVID-19, of the pandemic, both mitigate the spread of the, the disease and also the negative economic impact as well. Now, the difference that Treasury put on emphasizing on these funds are, is the long-term impact, the long-term benefit. Whereas the CARES Relief Funds were meant for the immediate needs. These are more, these are also for the immediate needs, but also they wanted the governments to focus on long-term benefits using these funds. And so that's something that we kind of took away from these. In that vein of the long-term benefit, they, they've allowed us two different time periods. The first time period for the coverage period is to use these funds on expenses that are eligible by 2024. And what that means is we, we need to incur and obligate those funds by 2024. But it doesn't mean if we're working on a infrastructure project that all the cash needs to be out the door by then. That date is 2026. So December 31st of 2026 is when all the funds need to be out the door. But the funds need to be obligated at least by 2024. So that's the whole long-term impact that they're emphasizing with these funds to address the pandemic and any harmful impacts from the pandemic. So I'm going to begin the presentation by talking about the restrictions on use. So I wanted to start with this. The two that they really started with in the, the IFR, the 151-page document that they provided, was the paying down of unfunded pension liabilities. So they restricted that use. And they also restricted offsetting tax cuts. And so they didn't want your tax, taxes to be cut or to be postponed and, and replaced by these funds. Those are the two restrictions that they explicitly included in the beginning of their document. Now, throughout the document, they included these other, these three other bullets that I've included on this, on this PowerPoint slide, as you can see here. So this is what we've all been waiting for, for 60 days, right? Since the ARPA was passed, the eligible uses. I've listed the four eligible uses that they've included in the IFR. And just a reminder, these are all mutually exclusive. So that means we don't have to meet all of the eligibility of each and every one of these uses. We just have to meet one of these uses for a particular program or service. So the first one is responding to public health needs and economic damage from the pandemic. Second one is providing premium or hazard pay for essential workers that were at risk of, of catching the virus. Number three is replacing lost revenue. And four is investing in necessary water, wastewater, and/or broadband infrastructure. Now, the common theme in, on all these four eligible uses is using these funds to address the impact of COVID-19. And that's, they really emphasize that on all four of these uses.
Before you leave that slide, can you comment, for example, do we have lost revenue? Is that even, are we gonna pretend or not pretend that that's, that we're eligible to put any money into that category?
We're gonna, let's just answer this way. Mike has one opinion, I have another, and we're gonna keep looking at it. But we're gonna look at the possibility.
Okay.
But I think the lost revenue option puts more money directly into the city coffers. My opinion is, I think we're doing well. And the opportunity to invest in long-term needs of those being impacted by COVID may, from a priority standpoint, may supersede us concerned about that the Mesa Arts Center didn't collect revenues during the pandemic, kind of as an example, right? Or, or do we say, no, we'd rather take those funds and invest it in a small business assistance facility or something like that. So I think it's more about whether we can qualify and more about what are the real needs for us to invest in, if that makes sense.
I'm just saying, from an accounting perspective, it was easy under CARES Act. We could have just put all of that money in the public safety category and not had to work-
We don't have that option this time.
Right.
Yeah.
But those other four categories, for example, water projects, we've got-
Yep. Mayor, we're gonna go through each one of these and talk about it. But you're, you're absolutely right. And that's, that's what's different. You can see the idea of investing is, and capital is, is a difference.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Yeah, I'll go through each one of the eligible use of buckets. The first one is, I can, we can really view it as two separate pieces, identifying and addressing the actual impact of the virus and mitigating the spread of the virus, and also the economic impact. So this first slide that you see is really the first piece of this bucket, the mitigating the spread of the, the virus and, and addressing it directly. The eligible uses that are included in the IFR are, you see here on the left, and the right has examples of those uses. And they, and Treasury mentions this to be a non-exhaustive list, which means if we come up with other uses that qualify, they could work as well. So on the left, they, they list out the containing mitigating COVID-19. Some of the examples are the vaccine programs, PPNE, medical expenses, capital investment facilities to, to meet the pandemic operational needs. Second is during the pandemic, we all saw the need for behavioral or, or mental abuse treatment and behavioral healthcare needs. And they included that as well as a use. And then finally, the payroll benefits for those that are dedicated to respond to the COVID-19. And here, as Mr. Brady said, this is a little different from before where, while we can use the funds and those expenses to pay for the payroll cost of those personnel, the public health and public safety, it would be only for those personnel that are, their units are dedicated to addressing COVID-19 specifically. So a little bit more restrictive on that use for that one. The second part of this bucket is the negative economic impacts. And now this is where they talk about the impacted industries, the tourism, the travel, the hospitality, helping these industries get back to pre-pandemic places before the pandemic hit, help them with their cost of improving their ventilation, their physical barriers or signage, helping them get reopened. Marketing costs as well would be included here. A lot of the public sector agencies are facing budget shortfalls during the pandemic and currently. And so the IFR mentions that we're 1 million jobs below pre-pandemic levels in the public sector. And so this is another eligible use for those that need to rehire public sector staff to provide those essential needs to the committee, to community. The third section here is the small business support. And this is really giving them that assistance to operate again at pre-pandemic levels. Again, but we'd have to tie these to COVID-19 impact. And then finally, the last category is hard-hit communities. And I'll just want to take a little bit of, make a point here. The IFR really talks about those in lower-income communities that were hit harder by the pandemic than others for a variety of reasons. So what they have provided here is more flexibility to local and state governments to provide programs and services. And that flexibility is, that is presumed to be because of COVID-19. The, so if the funds are for a program for homelessness, for example, that would be assumed to be due to COVID-19 if it's located in those lower-income neighborhoods. So that's some flexibility that they've provided for local governments here. So that's the first bucket. The second bucket is the premium pay. So this is really, again, to provide additive pay for those that had taken, have taken on the risk of being infected by the coronavirus. They provided qualifying sectors in the IFR, but they've also allowed the flexibility for local government executives to also, also deem the critical, during, critical sectors as well during the pandemic. So these are for the essential workers that have provided those critical services. Now, they've also defined the, the premium pay as $13 per hour added to above and beyond their normal pay. And it's, they want to emphasize providing that to lower-income employees. And they define that by 150% of the average state annual wage, or the county, whichever's higher. We've taken a look at that. The state is about, if you, 150% of the state average annual wage is about $80,000. And so they allow, they allow you to pay the premium pay for those above that, but they want justification. And so that's a, that's another clarifying question we have that, that we'll send to Treasury is what does that mean, the justification is needed? Now, because this is similar to hazard pay, they've specifically said teleworking is excluded from this. So if you've had, if you've been working from home and haven't been at risk of it being exposed to the coronavirus, then you're excluded from being eligible for using these funds for premium pay. So that's, that's the premium pay bucket. And please ask, ask any questions if you have any. The third bucket is the revenue loss, which the mayor referred to earlier. And as Mr. Brady said, I don't, I don't think we, we'll probably qualify for this, but I wanted to make sure. And, and so what they do, the IFR provides a methodology, a consistent methodology for all governments. They want us to combine all of our revenues so we can't take it by line of business. They want us to combine all the revenues. They provide a definition, an existing definition of what the revenues, that can be included and what can be excluded. They start out with a base year, and then they grow it to a hypothetical revenue amount if the pandemic didn't happen. And you compare that to what actually did happen. And if there's a gap, that's the revenue, that's the expenses you can use these funds for on eligible govern- for on eligible government services. As Mr. Brady said, we'll probably be above the rates that they provided. They've provided us either 4.1, which is the national average, or our cities' average for the last three years of growth in those revenues. If we're above that, then obviously we most likely wouldn't qualify for that if our actual revenues are above those levels. So we'll take a look at that, but just wanted to present this as one of the options for the eligibility use. Again, we don't have to, to spend the money, we don't have to qualify for each and every one of these uses. So that's the revenue loss. The final bucket is the investment in infrastructure. Now, this is split into two pieces as well. It's water and wastewater, infrastructure, and broadband. So this first slide, I'll talk about the water and wastewater. And you can see on the slide, the examples here are constructing publicly-owned treatment infrastructure, managing and treating stormwater or subsurface drainage water, et cetera. They try to streamline this because obviously 2026 seems like a long time, or 2024. But obviously with these projects, it could, it's just right around the corner that we need to start these projects if we're going to use these funds for that. So what they've tried to do is say eligible products, eligible projects in EPA current revolving fund programs would be also eligible for these funds. So they've identified programs that already exist, and if they're eligible under those programs, they would be eligible here. And so they've allowed some flexibility for governments to use the current programs for that eligibility of programs. The second piece of this bucket is the broadband infrastructure. During the pandemic, we learned, and the IFR said, we learned how important that universal access to broadband, to quick broadband access is for families, for all the communities, for students, right? So really, what they want to emphasize these funds to be used for is fast speed broadband across communities, right? And they've identified this by saying they focus on reliable 100-megabits download and upload speed, and for communities to focus on those unserved or underserved areas. They define those areas to be areas without wireline connection that provides at least 25 download and three upload speeds. And so they want us to focus on those communities that are underserved or unserved and get up to that high speed. So that's the broadband infrastructure. This is, those are the four eligible buckets, and I just wanted to present this to you. There are a lot of reporting requirements that Irma and her team will have to worry about, the first being due July 31, 2021, just around the corner. So those will be additional reporting requirements that'll provide transparency into the program. And then we've had 60 days since the ARPA was assigned into law. We've had plenty of ideas that have been brought to the attention of Mr. Brady, and I wanted to bring those to your attention to get the council's feedback on areas that you would be interested to emphasize or to look at. I've listed those ideas on this slide. We've also asked departments to continue to bring their ideas to us. That's why I put the "other" at the very end. This will be ideas that we'll look at, the priorities of council, we'll continue to research and look at. We, again, we have until July 17, until, for the comment period. As the group below, before said, we're still expecting to receive more guidance in certain areas. An example for infrastructure, for water and wastewater, they, in the IFR, it says we will, we will receive future guidance, additional guidance. But these are the ideas that we haven't, that we're thinking about, and wanted to open it up for council to get any feedback on ideas we could use these funds for.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I really like the infrastructure piece, because I know that we, not only do we need new infrastructure, but we need to replace infrastructure as well in our older areas of town. And anything that we can do to not have to go out to bond and put a secondary property tax onto our constituents is a big deal for them. It helps them save money. But I also like the behavioral health piece in there as well, and perhaps there's something that we can do with the mobile crisis team, or to expand our mobile crisis team on the behavioral health side for Mesa Fire Medical and perhaps PD as well.
Thank you. And there's actually, was it today, the presentation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'll talk about that today, and public safety, yeah.
Mr. Luna.
Hey, Mike, you have a real task ahead of you, because all of these are great ideas. It's just deciding which is, which is going to be best for the City of Mesa. Of course, I'm going to be supportive of the broadband infrastructure, determining what that needs, and hopefully you'll be working with, alongside the school districts to determine that as well. And I'm sure you'll be working with economic development with the Small Business System Program. That's crucial, especially when you look at so many small businesses that were affected by the pandemic, and they're still struggling to get back up to speed. And workforce, job training, development is always a priority here in the City of Mesa, because we want to make sure that we have a workforce, especially when we have industry coming into, into the area that is trained and they can hire from this, from a trained workforce. So those are going to be important, and of course, I mean, they're all good. And medical transport vehicles, that's another priority, I think, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
This is hard, because it's, I mean, you talk to anyone in charge of any of these things, and they would say, yes, we need the money. And I worry, you know, with all this money being flooded, and as we know, most people will take something if it's free, whether they need it or not. And so I do like a lot of these ideas that will kind of get us away from that and really help the, where the real needs are. I agree with a lot of what's already been said. I think we start with the broadband, and we see what the, where those needs are, which areas, which neighborhoods, which communities, and then look at what that's going to cost, right? Because we know it's incredibly expensive. So if we start there, then we would kind of know where else we could build after that. We don't want to spend it all on that, of course. So I feel like a lot of the things that are on the list, we're already doing some really incredible things, like I think through the budget presentations the last couple of months, and there's some great things already happening in some of these areas. And so I guess it's looking, do they need more money? Anyone would take more money, right? So I don't know, I think we're doing some really great things in the small business assistance, in workforce job training, in some of these other things that we've, I mean, all of the homeless programs that we're doing. So, yeah, I guess that's not great assistance, but I would, I would suggest start with the broadband and then see.
Great.
Because that's going to be really expensive.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
Mike, just to clarify, that we're receiving the $52,700,000--
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember--
Right away.
Yeah, we received that this Tuesday.
We have it now.
We have it.
Gotcha. And then the other 50% by May of 2022.
Yes, correct.
So looking at your list, one question I had was about a materials facility, like we've talked about. Does that qualify for recycling facility, like in the East Valley? Is that something you could squeeze in there? You know, for, I'm just asking--
No, it's a great, it's a good question, and let us put it down and look. I don't know.
Well, there were some, I think, COVID restrictions during that time.
Yeah.
You know, there was things sanitation-wise that Scott had adjusted schedule to, and drivers and things--
No, yeah.
--impacted. Sanitation, which is an important part of health in our community--
Yes.
--public safety, well, not, but public health issues. So I don't know if you can, don't use my analysis of that. But I was looking at the list, anything, and I agree with Councilmember Thompson, anything we can reduce a bond or some type of payoffs to build some water infrastructure, like we need a water line to the grick.
Right.
Bottom line is--
So these funds would help us maybe accelerate. You know, we have the central pipeline, and then we have another pipeline that'll get us more of the on-project water over onto the other side, too. What do we call that pipe, the tran?
The East Mesa Interconnect.
The Interconnect, thank you. So we're, those are two significant projects. Now, listen, those two projects alone would suck up every dollar here. So it's going to be this balance, right? Where it's, so we'll, yeah, but we recognize if we can accelerate it with the design funds and getting it started sooner, that may be something to do.
Right. I mean, all of these are great suggestions. Do you want like two or three from--
No, no, no. It's making sure, this, obviously, we're not going to be able to do all of these, but if we miss something, this is, you know, we just want to make, get a feel, because obviously, we've got to vet through all of these projects, make sure that how the guidance allows for us, we're not going to be able to do all these projects. Because I think, as we've heard, talking with council, we're looking for long-term investments, you know, kind of legacy. And there are other initiatives going on, especially on the broadband side, where we're working with some of the current providers and trying to help identify ways that they can short-term get to more homes, and working with some programs there. But, yeah, it's, I think what we, I'm hearing, this is great. I just, the feedback about things you're most concerned about helps us as we go through the project. We're going to come back multiple times, council, and have these conversations, too.
I just, one other, when we talk about medical transport vehicles, I'm thinking about police vehicles as well. Is there any, would police vehicles qualify, like the replacement of--
I guess they could. We're thinking the medical gave a direct link to COVID and being able to respond with the medical transport vehicles. You thought that might fit? I'm not sure which--
I'm sure this is a work in progress.
Absolutely. That's why it's so long.
That's right.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor, and then Mr. Riddick.
I want to ask a question. These are the dollars we're receiving. Is there, I hear from the federal level, there's also infrastructure bills. Now, will that affect us directly, or is that going to states? Or how does that feed into this?
We hope it will, will get some of that. We just--
It hasn't been approved.
It's still evolving.
Yes, it hasn't been signed into law currently.
But you're right, yes. That's the, that's the belief, right? That there will be projects that will be eligible under that, separate program than this.
Yeah, okay. Because I know, and when we talk about infrastructure, the money can go very quickly, whether broadband or water. I do have an opinion about using it for the central reuse or anything like that. Those are things that we need to do due to growth and large industrial and data centers and things like that. I can't say that that is necessarily due to COVID. So I would push that then we use our bonding process to deal with that, and where we focus any of these federal dollars is in our low-income areas, in any water, electric, broadband infrastructure that we need to do and identifying those places. And even broadband, we're not going to be able to do every place, but if we can take the most critical areas and make impact, then I certainly feel that that would be a good use of the dollars. Regarding small business assistance, there's something there, and what we have learned in the CARES dollars, there are still so many businesses that need, especially in social media, if they had a website and on social media, they could, these are very small business, micro-businesses, get, really grow their businesses and be more sustainable to whatever the economy brings. Having a small business assistance facility might be a great way to listen to small businesses and understand what they need and, you know, provide those services and just be a small business, entrepreneurship, starting a small business. We've done a lot of work in this endeavor. We have identified that in economic development that we want to continue. So there's something there. I haven't really, I know, but there's something in the small business assistance and entrepreneurship that I think we can focus on and will serve our city well and provide those jobs to those who need it most. I really feel that this is a great opportunity to, like you said, to look at our other funding that we have in housing and home dollars and all these other assistance, and pulling them all together to make the most impact for those who are in our lower incomes. We see already, even, I represent an area that has, you know, low-income area, there's a certain amount, because of our success in downtown, the battle of the gentrification, and how do we bring those residents and those neighborhoods up with our success instead of push them out? And if we can use any of our programming and dollars in order to raise their standard of living, I think it also helps us impact in the long run of having to need that homeless dollars and all those things. We want to, these dollars will run out at one point, and I will hope that we need less dependence on those assistance programs at that point, and that that be our goal, that otherwise we're going to set ourselves up for not creating programs that won't be able to sustain. And if we don't use the dollars to change the lives of the people who need it the most through what we're doing, it's going to drain our city, and I know it's a national problem. But all these wonderful dollars, we have to think about the long-term sustainability. How do we use those so that we don't get in a bind of not being able, of having the need for assistance? As far as medical transport, one part that I do like, and I don't know what we have that we're doing in public safety, is our CM units, our, what do you call them? The mental health units that go out. And I know we're doing some things in public safety to route the calls effectively, and if we need to make that, you know, to be able to have the units to address the mental health of that. And I will just throw in there, Visit Mesa, I'm on the board there, realizing the impact, any marketing dollars, I'll just throw that in as something to revive our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frankie.
Yeah, I think, just to comment on the, how do we, how do we map out and balance these funds that are coming in through CARES and ARPA, and then also yearly, right? How do we create a functional map of how we create impact in these sections? I think that's an important concept that a lot of us have mentioned, in looking at how we look at homelessness and take people in the continuum to get out of homeless, right? That intersects with small business or workforce development, those programmatic pieces that we can also use in the future, right? I think that's going to be an important aspect, of how do we map that, that impact-driven kind of funding that we're getting. I think also, in addition, I would say, you know, COVID also realized the health of our community and looking at if it's a medical response unit, or a lot of cities created these mobile vaccine or mobile testing vans, or, you know, how do we look at public health? Because, you know, every year, in addition, you know, flu and other illnesses happen, and I know we have a strong partnerships with Mesa Public Schools in doing vaccinations for flus every year, you know, giving shots for thousands of kids and staff. How do we keep on in creating an infrastructure that facilitates that and keeps our people healthy in our community is an important aspect on building that infrastructure for the future. So I think the more is like, how do we create that map that you mentioned, Mr. Brady, on how leveraging all these funds together that creates impact in various different aspects to the, to the work that we're doing with the city and our partners in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that I have anything to add, that you could, I think any one of us could take any one of these bullet points and advocate for it, and very persuasively. I mean, they're all very important and responsible ways to use this money. So I, I guess the only thought I'm struggling with right now is, should we use this money as a windfall to help us with existing things we're doing? Or do we look at it as a way to leap forward in other, in ways that we never could have absent, you know, something like this, something extraordinary happening like this? And when I say leap forward, still, it's in areas that are critical to our community. We need to address homelessness at a regional level. We need to participate with our other communities, and we are encouraging them to take this problem seriously and to allocate some of their, some of these funds to participate in a regional solution. We need to put our money where our mouth is. The broadband issue is one that every city in the world needs to figure out, and I don't think we have a model yet that works. How do we get fiber to every home and business in our city? That's an extraordinarily expensive thing, but it's extraordinarily important. And so maybe something extraordinary like this is, you know, the one-off way that we can address that. So-- So this will be a very interesting process to go through this. I look forward to it. It's not going to be easy, but it is critically important. So I look forward to working with everyone in the room on that.
Mayor and council members, I appreciate your feedback. As Mr. Freeman said, this is the first step of the process. We'll take your feedback back and continue to look over the priorities and try to develop a plan that we'll bring back to City Council to get your approval or to get your feedback on. So I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next agenda item we have is item two, that's current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know you guys have been very busy. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. I was trying to figure out the name of the new exhibit at the Natural History Museum. And I wanted to make sure my colleagues had an opportunity. I think Vice Mayor Duff had the opportunity to go and see it. It's going to be opening up this summer. So if you have the opportunity, please try to go see it, and it's going to be very exciting. Let's see, yesterday, I attended, presented award to Ms. Evelyn Griffin, a third grader at Los Angeles Elementary School for entry in the city of Mesa Express Your Environmental Self-Herthday Creative Challenge. It was great to be with the kids over at Los Angeles Elementary School and to see the smile on that little girl's face. She wrote a poem. And then we also gave an award to another third grader. These are third graders and they're, and they're participating in city programs. So that was really exciting. His name was John Willis, so we want to congratulate them both for participating in the city of Mesa's program. Yesterday, I had an opportunity to visit CAE Aviation Academy at Falcon Field Airport. The CAE hosts pilots in training from across the world, and it's an incredible asset for the city of Mesa as well as Falcon Field. What was most exciting is I got to participate or I got to go into a simulator. Unfortunately, I crashed, but, but, but it was great. It was a great experience. So I, if you all have the opportunity to go and visit CAE, and maybe they'll let you go through their simulator and fly a plane. But, so anyway, that's what I did, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Luna. Vice Mayor, or Julie? Go ahead.
I have done that, and I've crashed too. I attended a groundbreaking ceremony for Mesa High. They are doing renovations that are part of the new bond program, a new science building. So that's exciting. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out to all of our Mesa Public School seniors that are graduating tonight. My daughter's one of those. It's an exciting day and last day of school.
I know, that's a big deal for a lot of families, isn't it? So, yeah. Vice Mayor.
Yes, okay. I'd like to recognize that today is the first Mental Health Action Day with a mission to encourage and empower people to take their first actions on mental health, whether for themselves, their loved ones, or for their communities. Because mental health is health. Mental health is very important, especially during this trying year and for our youth. Incredible statistics on how it's affected our youth this past year and to, that we remove the stigma and support each other in, in our mental health. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, other things, yes, Mr. Luna.
I think this is the last day of school at Mesa Public Schools, right? So we want to congratulate all our graduates. And there's a real cool little video, if you want to see picture of us, what we looked like when we were in high school. So I'm sure our PR, our PIOs will share that cool little video. But, but we do want to congratulate all of the Mesa Public Schools. I'm not sure Gilbert is on that list or next week, but, and we want to wish them well. I know it's been a tough year, but congratulations to all the graduates. And, and good luck to all the junior high and elementary kids as they enjoy exciting summers.
Amen. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us under this item? If not, next item is schedule of future meetings. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just remind the council that we will not be holding a study session next Thursday, May 27th. So our next study session will be Thursday, June 3rd at 7:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is the acknowledgement of board and committee minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Any opposed? Our last item is to convene an executive session regarding the Lane lawsuit. Is there a motion to convene an executive session? Thank you, Mr. Luna, and seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We'll now proceed to the executive session.